Good evening. I'd like to call the Budget Workshop for the Town Council to order on Tuesday, April 9, at 6:36. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Nancy Pelosi.
Here.
Councilor Agelson.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Okay. So tonight, education will not be here tonight. They are on school vacation. We had quite an extensive report from them at our last council, at our last Budget Workshop. So I told them it was not necessary for them to come tonight. And so the one area that we did not cover last Thursday was capital improvement. And then we did ask some of the departments to come back to us. We had questions in regards to the budget. So tonight is kind of just going over those reports back to us from the departments in capital improvement. And we did, based on our discussion from Thursday night, we put a list together of all of the potential cuts and additions to the budgets to see once where we are. So we'll just kind of go over that. And then, so that'll be on general government and then capital improvement. And then that should be it for tonight. So hopefully, it'll go smoothly. So, we are not going to be making any cuts, or we are not going to be making any motions to adjust the budget tonight due to the fact that we only have five council members here tonight. We do have to finalize the budget on Tuesday night. So between our discussion last Thursday and tonight, we should be ready, prepared to do that on Tuesday night and go through and finalize the budget. Right, Lisa? We can't go beyond next Tuesday because of referendum? Is that correct?
No, the referendum's the 14th this year.
Okay.
We need to go one more.
If we had to. Okay. We'll try not to do that. Okay. So Anthony handed out a list of the budget revisions that we had talked about. And I just want to review these to make sure with the department heads that are here in regards to this, that these are all okay with them, if any corrections need to be made. And then we can go over the departments that submitted to us. We asked Public Works, Fire, and Library for additional cuts, and they did come back with recommendations. So that is, those are also listed on here. So let's just go down the list. First is Mayor and Council, Department 4103. So we talked about the part-time wages, and this is just a reduction in the clerk's salary with the council going down to one meeting a month and then a couple extra meetings. So we could eliminate 12 of the meetings on there. So that was, that's a potential cut of $3,000. The next one is printing and binding. This is a new one. We did not talk about this last Thursday, but in reviewing the budget. So these lovely budget things that get printed, every, this one is the proposed, and then they print the final after it's approved. So there's 50 copies of each, and there's probably 35 that get thrown out. So my proposal would be to reduce that to 25 copies of each. And hopefully, at some point in time, we can go online with those and not have any Finance, other purchase services. There's $5,000 in there for additional Munis training. Anthony, yes, no?
Yes, I did email Munis on the entire topic of our relationship, and we're having a meeting together to go over all the concerns and also the game plan. So I would say that's a safe move to take it out there.
Okay, great. Central Services, Printing and Binding, $1,500 cut, and this is for the printing of letterhead. Letterhead can be done electronically, and this way, if there's any changes in personnel, we don't have to keep reprinting and throwing out letterhead. So we are going to eliminate that for printing of letterhead. And then, under Building Equipment, there were four HVAC units budgeted at $1,500 each. Franny told us that they have one in stock. And so my proposal would be is to cut three out of the four, which is $4,500. So that would give us two to have. And if something really bad happens, we also have the maintenance, the general maintenance account that Franny manages if we needed to go more than two. Where were those going to be? They're just as... Just as needed? They have, what did you say, 10, Franny?
Yeah, 10 of the old units.
They have 10 of the old ones. So as they go... Oh, I see. As they break down, then they replace on there. Next one is Assessor. So Near Maps, I see Dave was here. So Near Map, we did in February of this year?
Yeah, two months ago.
Right. So it's, is it a one-year subscription, the 7,500?
I didn't actually mean to purchase myself, but I have to assume it's a year.
Okay. So in the budget, there was a full, another full year, and so we just want to cut that back and just do a six-month because it'll expire. The current one that we have will expire next year. So if we do another six months, that'll get us onto, hopefully onto the cycle where it's fiscal year on there. And I know that this is split between the Assessor and the Planning Department, and they each take 50% of the costs. So it would be an 1875 cut in each department, and that would be for six months of the Near Map. Technology, a proposed cut of $1,500 for Dropbox, to get rid of Dropbox. Right now, I know they use Dropbox to put our agendas in and correspondence to us, but by going to the Microsoft program, they have OneDrive, and that is the shared drive. So we can accomplish the same thing as Dropbox and using the OneDrive. The only issue is, is that all council members have to use a device, a town-issued device, so that they have OneDrive. If you're using your personal computer, you can get the email outlet, but you don't have OneDrive. So then you don't get the shared files. So you would need to use either your Chromebook or the new computer.
Okay, I get it.
Okay. Other way...
Because I'm the last one, so...
Well, no, there's probably some other ones. Yeah. So...
You gonna get a new one?
Yeah.
You need to get one. I use my iPhone, so I can't.
Well, you can if you go to, if you get OneDrive on there, but I don't know if the town will put that on there. So I will tell you that I use OneDrive to share documents with you, so you need to get it. You have to get a password. Right. So it's available to us. We need to start using the, those things. Benefits, Insurance, and Other. So we talked about the Leave Liability Account, which is an account that they use for when people retire or leave and it gets, when they get paid out for their accumulated either sick or vacation time. So Anthony was going to check on this to see...
So 20 is a safe bet.
So 20 is a safe bet for next year. So they generally put in $120,000 each year. This year so far, we are through seven months, we are less, we spent less than 50% of that. So the question was asked if we could cut something out of there. Okay. Police Department, Facilities Maintenance. This is in regards to the new building. So they had budgeted nominal amounts for HVAC, electrical, and plumbing repairs. And the building will still be under warranty. So those, those three items totaled $4,400 in the budget. So at the last meeting, the chief said that that was fine. The next line is Retirement. So this is one that came up over the weekend when I was taking a tighter look at the budget. And I talked to Anthony yesterday. So there are police officers that are still on the defined benefit, and then most of them are on defined contribution. But when Anthony would figure out the retirement cost to the town on overtime wages, before it was, we had more in the defined benefit plan than in the defined contribution plan. So the, the number was always calculated as if they were all on defined benefit. So it would be overfunded somewhat. With the hiring of the two new officers now, it's pretty close to a 50/50 split, and we can now do a blended rate on the retirement, which will save us, we can reduce that retirement between, from somewhere between $125,000 to $145,000. I just plugged in $125,000, but the actual calculation, Anthony was like $149. So we, we could go up a little bit more, but it just gives them a little cushion, just because you never know who's going to take the road jobs, the extra duty. So it's an estimate to begin with. If there's money left over at the end of the year, it comes back. But that is, that's, that's a new proposed cut that we did not talk about last Thursday. Fire Department. We asked Fire to come back in to cut an additional $25,000 from their budget. And here are their cuts for the $25,000. So it's the part-time wages. There was an increase in stipends from $1,020 to $1,100. So they're just going to cut that back to $1,050. Technical Supplies, cut for $4,500. Equipment Maintenance, $5,000. This was, the question was brought up because they have, Tower One is now online, and in the past, for the past few years, we've been told that Tower One was requiring a lot of maintenance, equipment maintenance. They have $85,000 in this budget for the year. So they came back and are taking $5,000 out of equipment maintenance. Professional Development, $2,500 decrease. Other Purchase Services, $5,700 decrease. And Technical Equipment, $5,000 general cut. The next line, Retirement. This is, this was separate from their $25,000. This is a result of the new pension plan that was put into place, that was voted on by the council. And there is a savings that the actuarial had presented to both Pension, and then we presented it to the council. And it actually reduces the retirement funding that would need to be done for them. So that is $35,060. The one other thing that is not on here that we talked about was on techno, is it your technical equipment where you do the fire suits? The, okay. So that budget right now is at $65,000 in their budget. And they have scheduled, one of their big items in there is replacing 10 to 12 of those, of the fire suits. And each one is about $3,000. So what we could do is take another cut out of technical equipment to pay for those through ARPA funding. Is to pay, because it, it would reduce our operate, it would reduce the mill rate because we would be taking it out of our operate, but we would still fund it because we are going to, we would give them ARPA funding so that they could still purchase them on there. So it's the same effect, but it does reduce the mill rate.
How much are we talking about?
We could do $35,000, $40,000.
Well, we can take some money away from the, yeah, maybe. That's a possibility.
Well, you asked that, you asked that everyone sharpen their pencil mowers, so I did.
Yes, they did. I appreciate it.
And we, we have about $150,000 left in ARPA funding, and I think this would be a good use of ARPA funding.
Oh, we gotta spend that.
And it's something that they would purchase right away with the, with the funding on there, and it would reduce the mill rate this year. So it's just picking a number, whether it's $30,000, $40,000 on there. So there's still $150,000 in the ARPA funds? Correct. There's about 150 in there. So, so that, that would be another proposed cut that I would suggest is technical equipment, but then on the flip side of that, funding that cut with ARPA funding so that they would still have the money. Ambulance, subsidy on, this was, so it's a subsidy from the council or from the general fund to ambulance. And my proposal would be to fund it at the same level that we're funding it this year, which is $750,000. So it would be a cut of 175. Now Anthony, you were going to do some kind of a chart for us to show us with the change that you made in how you...
I did not, I'm sorry.
So the way they, the way they schedule the shifts now, they're doing more through R? Can you just explain that, Anthony?
Sure. So we're running two paramedic-level ambulances, and each one obviously requires a paramedic and a driver. And the paramedic is hired through the contractor, Northeast Fire Rescue. And the EMT part of the shift, we give first shot to our own people, who do it at a much lower rate than if we have to use the contractor. So the way it works is that our people have first shot at it. Whatever is not failed by our own people gets kicked out to the contractor to fill. So the goal would be to get as many people on this side taking the shifts, because you need a driver, obviously. They're not, they can't drive themselves. So you need a driver in the ambulance. So the, the thought is, and in fact, the last two weeks, I had talked at the last meeting with the mayor, I think it was around 15%. And the last two weeks, bill came in yesterday, and it was 7.9%. So again, another fantastic job by our people stepping up and pulling shifts, eliminating the need for a contract...
What do you mean, 7.9% of...
Oh, the shifts were filled by the contractor on the EMT piece. It had been running, yeah, it had been running about 15% filled by the contractor, 85% for our people. In this last two-week period, it was only 7.9% we had to farm out to the contractor. So again, great, great job by our folks, you know, stepping up and pulling the shifts.
Hi, Andy, who's do you have?
I'll get an answer for it. Top of my head, I'll give you a good answer. In Company Four specifically, or department-wide?
Department-wide, I was just curious.
I'll get an answer for you. We have the, the numbers of the, how many EMRs, how many EMTs?
All right, thank you. Okay. Building Department. The question was on Other Purchase Services, which is an outside consultant for jobs that they may need someone else to review. It's $16,000 in the budget this year. So far, we are quite under budget on that. So Victor Benny, I just put a number in there, I'm...
I think it's a good idea. So the building officials explained to me that the report for that was, or of that number was kind of planted in that department from, at the request of the Permanent Project Building Committee in case there needed to be any kind of reviews that they requested for, you know, projects during design stage. But I think since the police department and the high school projects are out of design date, we may not need that anymore. But maybe something that we, we check with Permanent Project Committee to see what they anticipate or if they can.
Okay. So right now, I, I just took $8,000, half of it, as a cut to there, because we were under that as of right now in the current budget also. So that's where I came up with that number on there. So, I mean, both of those projects, Police and the High School, are going to be, you know, closing out this year on there. I don't see any big town projects on the horizon right now. I think it would be a safe bet to cancel it. Public Works was asked for, the town manager had cut $40,000 from their budget. They were asked to come up with another 25, and Franny came in with 37. All right, Franny, he gets the extra bonus points here. So can you just explain your cut? I know there's stuff in our packet, but...
So the down-the-figure part is that we're, we're cutting some of the liquid out, so we're rebuilding our liquid base. We just bought five double wall tanks, which we didn't have, we had single wall tanks. So we only paid $50 for all five, two states. So what we're planning on doing is we're buying a brine maker. So this year, we had a position that was supposed to be transferred at this year's budget to buy a brine maker, and it's going to stay with $7,000. We'll, we'll pay it in three years, so we're taking $17,000 out of the liquid, and then we're taking the other 200, 200, 20, about 20, so we're cutting 500 tons of salt total this year.
What do you, what do you normally, what do you normally...
2500 tons.
Okay. So you're just taking 500. I mean, you're still taking a bulk of it.
We need two cuts, Mike's cut and Mark's cut is the 500. He took 250, and we just took the other two.
Okay.
Fran, does this provide you the opportunity to make on-demand?
We'll make it, we're going to have the four tanks full of salt, and one tank's going to have chemical, the temperatures get lower. So, yeah, we'll be making it with our own salt.
Yeah, but what I'm wondering, what I'm asking is, like, if you, let's say you use, I don't know, what do you, what do you, what's a total year usage average?
Well, it depends on winter.
Okay, a bad winter.
Well, we use in salt lines?
No, in, in brine.
In brine, we use...
You know, whatever the liquid is, whatever you call the liquid.
Whatever, I don't know the gallons, but it's...
Just give me a guess.
Or what's that?
Hundred, thousand gallons? Twenty thousand gallons?
Thirty-something thousand.
Okay. So my question is, can you make 10? And then, as the year's progressing, make 10 more? Or do you have to make it all at once?
No, you can make it every day.
Okay, that, that's what I'm asking.
So right now, we're buying liquid in, so after, after two storms, we have to get our...
Okay, okay.
So we'll have, we'll be able to, we can do it in the middle of the storm.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
500 gallons per hour.
Great. It's worth the investment. Okay. Library. Library was asked to cut 10,000, and they came back, and they are doing a general cut in Utilities of 3,000, Other Purchase Services for 2,000, and Library Books for 5,000. So thank you to the library system for their cuts. Next one is Contingency Reserve. So for those of you who were at Thursday night's meeting, we all saw that this was a huge increase in contingency, which I had questions about because I just couldn't imagine that we had to go to almost a $700,000 increase in contingency. And it was, you know, we do have three contracts that are up for renewal, and so that's where the money sits until the contracts are settled. And I did a little bit more work over the weekend because I just couldn't believe that it was that high in contingency reserve. And I talked to Anthony yesterday, and my suspicions were correct, and there was something wrong in the formula that was used. And so we are able to cut $364,000 out of contingency due to the calculation, the manner in which it was calculated. So that is a huge savings on the town side, and was very happy to see it go that way. We were looking, I mean, not that, I mean, it's still a tough budget year. So the budget as presented to us started out at a 3.89 mil increase. And after we go through all of this, we can kind of come up with, on the town side, what we've come up with on cuts. But this, between this and the retirement on the Police Department on overtime, it's about a half a million dollars, which is huge on the town side for cuts. So the other thing on the towns, there's two other things which don't really affect the mill rate, but we, we had talked about them. So we talked about taking the Building Maintenance Accounts from the various departments, Library, Community Center, the Reynolds Beers House, Town Hall, Central Services, taking all of the facility maintenance, whatever is in the budget, and moving it all over to Public Works. Because Franny's Department is the one that assesses all of them, tracks all of the maintenance, and I think it will help tremendously in our Munis transition, since we seem to be having a little problem with the flow of things. And this way, Franny's Department manages, they either fix it or they contract out. So everything is done through Public Works anyway, so things will be handled through Public Works. We talked about this last Thursday. Anthony said it can be done easily.
There are some items that each department, that doesn't go through any Public Works, like, I mean, pest control.
Right, those, those stayed in.
Right.
Those weren't moved.
So I talked to the departments and see what a realistic number is to leave behind, but the balance that you're suggesting to move over to Public Works.
Right. So there'll be a line item for each department under maintenance, so Franny can track those departments. And, you know, each individual department will also be able to see, because it's not going to be all lumped together. It'll still be maintained separately.
Correct.
On there. So they'll all be able to see that. So, so that's, that's one move that we are going to have. And the other thing we talked about, and I see Louisa is here, is under the Health Department, we recently gave a donation through ARPA funds to the Community Gift Fund. And I think this was the first time a lot of us on the council had heard about this Community Gift Fund. It was started back in the 90s. The council originally funded it with some money, and that happened for a few years, and then it was cut out, the funding of it. So right now, it's all funded strictly through private donations and businesses. So we talked about the, the amount of money that is in the community dining room, which is $2,000. And right now, what we were told at the last meeting is the community dining room services seven residents in North Bramford, and that they can handle that through our own department and servicing. they can handle that through our own department and servicing them. And the community gift fund would be, that fund is only for North Bramford and Northford residents, and it does not get paid directly to the recipient, it goes to the provider. So, if it's for fuel, any electric, you know, utilities, food, anything like that, it gets paid directly to the vendor, it does not go to the recipient, but yet, we're able to help out the recipient. My feeling is that two thousand dollars would be better spent staying in town and servicing our people in town. So, if anyone has any comments, questions?
About your twenty-five hundred is your question request.
Oh, okay. Even better. And I, and I think it's, it's a, it's a good thing to go back and start funding the community fund, which is for North Bramford people. So, that would just be a motion that we would make when we do all of these next week, is, it's really, it's not going to change anything, because we're just transferring it from one to the other on there, same dollar amount on there. So, tho, those were, those are all of the proposed cuts, increases. So, the first one is mayor and council, and there was a, which I believe was a typo, but we have to correct it, it was three dollars for other purchase services, which is for like pins, flowers, and plaques, and we really can't get much for three dollars. So, I, what was that number supposed to be?
I think it was supposed to be three hundred dollars.
Three hundred? Okay. So, that would be a change that we would need to make, is for three hundred dollars. Then we also talked about the old, well, the current police department, they will be moving, right now, projected move date is June, so we have not made a decision on that building, so it is still going to have to be, utilities, services are still going to have to be provided to that building until we make a decision on that building, so that has to be worked into the budget. The police department did not have anything in their budget, because it will no longer be their building when they move into the new one.
So, what's the, what is the present budget for the, for the building now, from what we're asking?
Well, it would change dramatically with no one in it.
With nobody, yeah, I understand it would happen.
I mean, I just threw a number in of ten thousand dollars, because I have no idea. It was just, it's kind of a placeholder.
And I have Mike Fumiani in purchasing working on getting you an estimate number for that, should have it before the end of the week.
Okay. Because it's, you know, we have to do the alarm.
Could be more.
It could be more, yeah.
Could be more.
Utilities, that type of thing, so...
And it's not, no reason, it's gonna be vacant, so it's...
Maybe. Depends on what we do with it.
Well, we're moving in.
Huh?
We're moving in.
So, so that, that's a placeholder right now, and will he have that for Tuesday night?
I expect, yeah.
Okay. Public Works, there is an increase in their part-time account, which is for seasonal help, and this was just because in their budget book, they have their seasonal help, which covers both summer and winter. It's not just the summer months, but they had it at sixteen dollars an hour, which minimum wage will be going up in January. So, they increased that, and the difference is, to increase that, is thirty-two hundred dollars. And then the last one is the eighteen thirty-one fund. We've talked about this previously, about, this is for the two-hundredth birthday celebration for the town. The last one was the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, and at that time, the town council did give twenty-five thousand dollars to the committee funding for it. So, we just thought it was a good idea to start putting some money in there right now, and Mike actually told me there's already two thousand dollars.
There's two thousand.
Okay, so, so if we wanted to start with five thousand, to get five thousand in there, this would only, I didn't know there was any money in there, so I just put a figure of five thousand dollars in, in there. But, so we could just do three thousand, or we could keep it at five, it doesn't make a difference.
Where did the two thousand come from?
It's in the budget that you have in front of you, under operating transfers out. It's in the proposed budget.
Oh, oh, it's not in the, oh, okay, okay.
The money isn't transferred yet.
Okay.
So, it wasn't in anticipation of putting something in there this year, is that it? Oh, okay. I thought it was from, like, when we established it last year.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, the net effect of the pluses and minuses, most of them were minuses, right now is eight hundred and six thousand dollars. Now, that would change if, depending on what we did with the fire department and the fire suits. If it's thirty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars of ARPA funding, because that would come out of the operating budget, and we would substitute it with ARPA funding. So, that would be an additional cut to the budget then. So, so Anthony, if you just, if you figure thirty thousand onto this, what would this be in mills?
You are bringing it down to a three point two zero bill rate increase.
Okay.
Down to thirty-seven point seven two.
Based on proposed budget, with including the board of education?
No, this is just on the town side.
Community, Parks and Recreation?
Yep.
Did they come back with anything?
Their budget was already cut by ten thousand dollars on there, and they, we did not ask them to come back with anything. Their budget was pretty flat to start with, and the other thing that we asked for, Anthony, was that maintenance account that is, not sure where it sits, how much money was in their maintenance account that Franny manages, but in collaboration with Jesse. Do we know what's in there? Okay.
You had, originally, you had a question about under, a community center for quitting rental. What was that in relation to?
That was in relationship to the porta-potties, because they were, their, the contract was, it was the, this current year is the last year of the contract they were under. Do you have, I saw the pricing in, the budget book was up. Is that anticipated, or did the bids come in?
We're waiting on the state finalized. We're trying to get additional quotes that is based on the anticipated pricing. We were locked into pricing from five years ago, so you can imagine it went up exponentially, and it went up significantly. So, the pricing that's in your budget book is based off the state bid, which would be our only other option, versus if our bid comes in lower, which is appearing like it's not. We re-mid it twice now to try to get a lower cost, but it's appearing accurate in the budget.
Okay.
Should I ask it?
Yeah.
So, I do have a question. The stage, it was brought to my attention that we're, it's possible that it would be able to be rented out, and that was shot down. Is there, isn't why it won't be rented out? Because, I mean, with the revenue, it would bring in revenue.
So, our commission made a policy decision that the director and assistant director can do, and the town manager can do what they need to do, whether it's interminus valley, favors that have been given to us, and vice versa. But, my understanding is there are two people in the town, public works, that are trained to open and close it, and if we rent it, and one's on vacation or sick, or what are we gonna do? So, if you blow the tire, it's worth more damage to halt somewhere for, and some of the requests we've already gotten are not the most tangible for the town when we're going to blow them up.
I understand, okay, but we did purchase it on the assumption that it was going to be rented out, if it was, if it's possible.
I, I don't, I don't recall it being rented.
It might have been brought up, but I don't think that had, I don't think it was a decision we made.
Well, it was brought up.
Who were you gonna rent it to?
But it does bring in revenue. Excuse me?
Who are you gonna rent it to?
I don't know. I mean, but we rented it to, we rent, we used to rent the stage from other towns, from the town of Bramford?
No, Bramford rented it. It was donated to us from the town of New Haven.
Ah.
For thirty years.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it was...
We actually let New Haven use it this year, kind of to pay them back, do them a solid.
Well, see, things like that, towns tend to share.
Right. That I have no problems with, you know. I'm just saying, if a dance company comes, and they want to rent it, and you give them a price, and the cost of Public Works and everything, and they pay, and they're going to pay it, then rent it, it brings in revenue. That's all I'm gonna say.
In, in conversations, when it was ordered, and it was supposed to be here by three different deadlines, and it barely made the cup for, at the festival, they seem to be one company operation, so if something does break, there's a higher risk that we're out of the stage ourselves, if something needs to get replaced.
It's a stage. What can break? The lights? Sorry, I, hey, it was a very expensive piece of equipment.
Yes.
Like I said, if a dance company, or a band, they want to rent it, and they're willing to pay for it, rent it. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not. I'm gonna move, sorry.
It's okay.
Something they invested, invested in for themselves. I don't think anybody's just coming and renting to say...
Not anybody. I'm just, you know, you don't rent it to anybody. I understand, you don't want the, you don't want the town logo to the undersides. I understand. But if it's a dance company, or somebody of that nature, and they're willing to pay for it, and pay the two people that are going to go along with it, that's a lot of money.
We waited all, we, our commission felt the directors, assistant director, and town manager, maybe we'll decide later.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding general government? Okay. Now, we are going to go on to capital improvement. And Anthony, is the book, is this the only place that has capital improvement?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, so the first thing is, John, thank you very much for coming tonight. I know this came up briefly on the last meeting in regards to the paving. So, I'd like to start off with the paving. We did receive the quotes between what Tilcon bid, and then, I know you received a quote from a local vendor breaking it down. So, I'm assuming that it's like-for-like in the job, what Tilcon was gonna do, and then with the local person. Okay. So, that is quite a difference from what has been, the pricing that has been given to us in the past. So, has the job changed?
Yes. The job in the past, we were going to patch.
I think you have to come up to the mics, so they can...
In the past, we were gonna pa, patch sections. And during our last walkthrough with Dan Sonton, or myself, and Tilcon, and the private vendor, a couple of private vendors that walked through, we agreed that both schools now deteriorated to the point where patching is not worth it anymore. So, we were, we were gonna do some patching, certain areas that were bad previously. But, the, it's not worth patching now. It's not worth patching sections now.
Okay, so, the number, if I, so Jerome Harrison, because that was the first one that was going to have work. That was the first, like, three years ago, that was the one that had money given to it for paving.
Yeah, originally Jerome Harrison, we weren't gonna do the long driveway coming in, and we weren't gonna pave the back.
The back, meaning behind the school?
Behind the school, because that's a parking lot also.
Correct.
We weren't gonna do the rear, and we weren't gonna do the main driveway coming in. We were gonna do the bus circle and all the staff parking in the front. That was originally two years ago. Now, seeing we did a walkthrough, the front main driveway is deteriorating, and the back is also deteriorating. So, if we patched a couple of years ago, we'd probably be coming to you again this year to redo the sections that have deteriorated in the past two or three years. So, when we did a walkthrough, we decided that it's, it's best to just do a total pave job on both schools.
Okay. And, so the additional lot out front, is that off the books?
That's off the books.
Okay, so that we don't have to worry about. So, it's the two hundred and sixteen thousand for Jerome. Can, can these projects be done in phases?
Yeah, I'm sure it can. Sure they can.
I mean, just before, so there's ninety thousand that the board of ed got three years ago for paving at Jerome, so that's still there.
Okay.
And then, they requested sixty thousand, only because of, they needed a number, and we used what the bids were last year that did not get awarded. What was the low bid? So, the difference between the two, that's, that's how the sixty got in there.
If, if I had to choose, I would tell you to pave Totoka Valley first.
Oh, really? So, that changed then too, because...
Well, it has. Totoka Valley, the left side of Totoka Valley, the gymnasium side, has just totally deteriorated. It's, it's worse than Jerome Harrison. And the front of Totoka Valley, that fronts the firehouse side?
Yeah.
That's a, there's a strip right there on the front that is totally deteriorated. So, if you're gonna do a project, I recommend you do whatever we can with your money at Totoka Valley, and we'll see about Jerome Harrison in maybe a year.
Well, if we came up with, like, a three-year plan, and did...
I would love to have you come up with a three-year plan.
And, and, you know, map it out, and it would be a discussion we would have to have, but I think it would be worth our while to map it out, and like, this is, this is our plan to do it over time. If it doesn't all, I mean, you're talking over four, you're talking almost a half a million dollars between the two. So, if we can do it over time, and we do have some money in there, we can, we can, that ninety thousand that's already there, we can just switch it over to TBS, we can...
We could definitely sectionize it. Even, even Jerome Harrison, we could do a certain area, if you decide that you're gonna, say, one year... If you decide that you're gonna, say, one year you have this much money, we'll figure what we could do with that much money. Jerome Harrison's a little bit easier, it's a little more compartmentized. Section A, section B, section C, we could probably get away with it there. Totoka Valley, we did the main driveway coming in when we did S T W.
Right.
So that's fine, you can actually see where the lines are cut off. So I would recommend we do the left side first, uh, and then see what we could do in the front with what you have.
Okay.
We could do another walkthrough with the vendors, and just say, how much you do this section? How much you do this section? We'll have them break it down. If you want, I'll have them break down both schools, we'll sectionalize it, we'll give it to you, and then you can say, okay, well, maybe next year we'll do section B at Jerome, it's this much, and next year we'll do section A at Jerome, it's this much, or section C at Totoka Valley. This way, maybe you put that much money in per year, we'll get it done.
Okay.
When you say the other, uh, front parking lot at Jerome, do you mean the, the gym side? The, where the gym, the gym side?
In front of the gym, yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
In front, yeah, where they, they come in off Merrick?
Yeah.
Yeah. That side there, that's pretty deteriorated, and the, the plaza loop is pretty deteriorated. But if you look at both schools, Totoka, it's worse.
Would you consider doing, you know, the loop at Jerome and the, the, the gym side at T V S in one year?
Exactly, that's why I, I wanna walk again with the vendors.
Hey, John, tell me about the curving part in front of the loop at Jerome.
Yep.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
That, 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 that's like a, that has to be ripped out.
So we, yeah, we have, well, there's curving work that needs to be done, there's some broken concrete curving and stuff like that. You know, when I walked with Danny, Danny's like, there's some stuff that we could do, or some stuff we're gonna ask the vendor to do. The best thing to do will have, I'll meet with Danny again, we'll meet with the vendors, and we'll walk out, we'll actually discuss what needs to be done, what they need to quote us.
Okay.
We could do that.
So do you think you can have something for next Tuesday?
Yes, I definitely can.
Okay.
Are we only just dealing with two vendors?
What's that?
Are we only just dealing with two vendors, or...
I, I, I actually walked the site with four vendors. That one is the first one that came back with a quote. But what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna call them and tell them we're gonna sectionalize it. Maybe we could break it down better.
But we have to, it would have to go out to bid anyway, so he's just trying to get better price.
I'm just, I'm just trying...
An idea, a better idea.
I'm just trying to get a better idea for you.
Yeah.
That, that's why we, we did the Tilcon quote, and I said, then we said, let's see what the vendor does. You know, we'll just compare those two first, because the vendors are gonna be pretty similar. You know, they pay per square foot, they're, they're not off that much. So we'll just do it now, so you have some numbers.
Okay.
Sound good?
That would be, that would be great, if we can get both projects, but do it over three to four years.
Okay.
On there.
Yep.
On there, okay?
Okay.
Great, John, thank you. So the, the other two things that I'd like to talk about on here is, um, police vehicles. So right now on budget funds, it's for two, the one twenty-six, five hundred, and that's for two vehicles. So the police department, when they do extra duty, they charge, which is common, so much an hour for vehicle use. And what they do is they split that cost, and they put fifteen dollars an hour into one pot of money, ten dollars an hour into another pot of money. One pot is used for maintenance and fuel cost, because that account, because of the extra duty, that account that's budgeted generally goes over, because the cars are out there more. So that pot of money that they put to the side is then used to make those accounts whole again at the end of the year. And whatever money is left, then goes to the general fund. The other pot of money just accumulates, and if the vehicle, if we need, if something happens and they need a, a vehicle is in an accident, and they need to get a vehicle right away, they have a pot of money that they could repurchase that, pay the difference between insurance and what a new vehicle costs. So that is the fund that I asked Anthony about what was in there. And there was a difference between what Anthony had and what Jimmy had, so what's your number, Anthony?
I'm currently looking at my spreadsheet, one ninety-one.
Okay, that's much closer to what Jimmy had. So I did talk to the chief, and he said he's absolutely fine if we finance, or we buy one of the vehicles out of that fund. So we would only have to do one out of our capital, and the other one, we can take the funding out of that fund. And he was okay, so it'd be, you know, approximately sixty...
Three thousand dollars?
Yeah, sixty-three thousand dollars. And he was, he was fine with that. And the other big thing in regards to capital right now is, so the council has worked very hard over the last, I don't know, six to eight years, I'm not exactly sure when we started that we put budget funds in our capital and program, and we've maintained it, we've kept it in there. And it's approximately one point two million dollars. It varies a little bit each year, but it's approximately one point two million dollars. And that money then is used for capital projects, it's, it pays for the leases on the fire truck, public works trucks, it does some road things, it does, um, capital projects in fire, board of education, um, any of the major departments, we have that one point two million dollars, and we've had it for the last number of years, and we've, we've tried to protect that. This year, um, because the budget came in, the mill increase was so high, it originally was over four mill increase. The town manager, in his proposal to the council, um, took eight hundred thousand dollars out of that area to reduce the mill rate increase. I, I totally understand why that was done on there. But with, I would, I would like to see us put some of that money back due to the fact of that roughly half a million dollars that we found in the contingency and the police overtime, the, the retirement. Because right now, it's, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot, you're talking three quarters of that budget that basically was wiped out, and that, that's a lot. Because what that means, if, that we don't have that money, we're already committed on leases. Tower one is two hundred and fifty, we have an ambulance, Franny has some vehicles out there. Like, if we don't increase that somewhat, next year, we're gonna have to put additional budget funds in to, to pay those leases. So I, I would like to, and it can be any number, I, I'm just starting with a number. I would like to see us put two hundred thousand dollars back in here, um, out of the eight hundred and some.
So you're saying you wanna make it a million here?
No, no, no. Right now, we're only, instead of taking eight hundred thousand, we would only take six hundred thousand. So that would only bring it up to five hundred and fifty-five.
Oh, I can't think of the one with two.
Yeah, no, no.
Because we had that in for years and years.
Right.
That's kinda touching, right? Um, I think we, it's gotta go more, a little bit more.
What do you mean?
Well, you wanna go to six hundred thousand to leave it, in other words, you wanna go to half of what, of the one point two?
Well, yeah.
So we're sitting there with six hundred thousand dollars as a buffer, is what you're basically...
Well, there, because there's things that we have to pay for.
Right, that's coming down next year. Is it six hundred thousand? How much of, how much of it do we really, we have to pay, or is it more than that? Because if we're gonna take that money, we're gonna have to find money. You wanna take eight hundred thousand dollars out of this one point two?
It, it, it already has been taken out.
Right, so it's been taken out.
Right.
And so we're left with six hundred thousand dollars, right?
Um, no, we're left with...
With four hundred thousand, sorry.
Right.
So we're only left with four hundred thousand, and we've, we've used eight hundred thousand. So we should really bring it back up to eight hundred thousand.
Well, then you're looking...
I understand that, because then we're, you're in a negative. Because if we're gonna assume, let's just say that everything is normal, we're gonna have to use another eight hundred thousand dollars next year. We're gonna have to come up with another two hundred thousand dollars next year, right? So if we don't take it, I mean, are we gonna take it next year, or are we gonna take it now? Is really what it is.
Well, the gamble is, is that you're hoping that there's... Well, no, that there's, you know, we, we do have some projects, some, some, um, that the grand list grows a little bit more. We do have some projects going on that could increase that. So, so if our grand list goes up, this year, it was, you know, a point one eight percent increases, actually, like, zero.
Right.
You know, it's sixty-two thousand dollars, it's nothing.
That's gonna do nothing.
So, so hopefully next year, and the other thing that could work in our favor for next year is we have two of our three projects that we went out, that we bonded for, that we will be able to close, hopefully, and see once exactly how much we have to bond. So Anthony, just make sure I'm saying this correctly. So we authorized to bond on the police station sixteen point two million, and on the communications, five point five million. So once those projects close, so all of our projected debt service is based on worst-case scenario of bonding those full amounts, correct, Anthony?
There's a factor for the state revenue, but I think your, your point is that it's still gonna be greater than the actual comes in at, and I think we'll have some opportunity for lowering that curve that looks so terrible currently.
Right.
Right, we, no, we knew that when we went out, when we bonded this. We bonded more than what, I understand.
No, we didn't bond more than what we authorized, we had to authorize...
Authorized sixteen point two million for the whole project.
Correct, we had to, we, we have to authorize to bond the max in case something happens to your, you know, grants.
I don't think it's gonna come in that much, so maybe, okay.
So, so our debt, our debt service, hopefully, will be coming down some, because if we can close out the police department and communications, the education takes a long time to close out, so I'm not counting...
But that's not gonna close, because that's...
I'm not, I'm not counting on that, but on those two projects, that will definitely help us, because we won't, it won't be on that, on that higher amount, it'll come down some. So hopefully, there'll be some savings there, so those are, those are two major things. So, and we, we can go higher, but then just realize we're gonna be starting at a higher mill rate. So right now, we, we reduced, based on the, what we talked about before, we brought it...
That's, I call them a savings, that's our savings.
We, we brought it down like a point seven mill.
Right.
So that, that's best-case scenario, that will decrease, it won't be point seven, depending on how much we wanna put in. I think we should put something back in, is my feeling, to, to...
I, I think we should too, but I think we have to, um... We have to be, we have to kinda measure the risk, manage the risk a little bit, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I don't think we, we should, we should fully, we should put back...
The eight hundred?
No, because, because that's, that's what I call managing the risk. We're, we're looking at probably, you know, optimistically looking for, to realize some benefit from what you just described. You know, we bonded, you know, we, we approved bonding at a certain level, it, hopefully, it's gonna come in under, and we'll benefit there. And along some other aspects of the, as the town progresses, so...
But also in regards to the whole bonding issue, as you will see in our, in the bond fund here is, um, the public works, um, renovation, office locker room renovation, expansion. So they have in here, right now, a million dollars for bond funds. I'm hoping, I, I don't think we should go out to bond, but I'm hoping between the two projects that we can close, that since those are already figured, we can shift a million dollars, that they come in, but between the two of them, we have a million dollars that we've authorized to bond, that we can shift over to public works. So we wouldn't have to necessarily go out and bond an additional million dollars, we can shift the burden of that, um, if we're going ahead with this, with this process. So we've invested money in, in the design and everything else. So, you know, the next step is determining funding it.
I, I really worry, and I know I said this to you before, I hope that before we close out that communication bond, that we make sure that everything is up and running, and working, and everybody's satisfied, because I do hear some concerns. And I hope that before that's finalized, that everybody's involved, has a chance to have a say.
When would that actually close? After the building, after June, July?
Do you have an estimate, Anthony?
Communication, the state's gonna do their testing in June, once the leaves are fully on the trees, to see what kind of coverage they can, they can get. They don't have a firm number at that point, to go back to Marie's comment, to make sure that the ninety-five percent coverage that they promised in the motor rule quote, we were able to achieve, and now the other lingering issue, whether it's equipment, or pagers, or pager coverage, there's some issues out there, and I think Marie's point is valid.
I think the fire department and the police department have issues still, and I think they need to be resolved before we close anything out.
Right, no, absolutely.
So we're talking July?
It's, it's active now, right? The police and fire?
Yes, but they, there are many people, many people having experiences that are issues with the radio communication, whether the towers are completely working correctly. I know it's gonna be tested in June.
Right.
Maybe that's when we'll have a better idea, but right now, there are some issues.
But, but it is, that's what we're using now, that's, that's our norm.
We're using it, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so we don't have to decide anything on, on C I P tonight, but these are areas that we still, when we have a full council, we, we need to talk about, and you need to start thinking of. The, the biggest thing is putting back in the C I P, you know, not taking eight hundred thousand, how much do we feel comfortable with putting back?
I think we should, like I said, I think we should just have, we should go back to the, instead of the one point two million, because we used eight hundred thousand, we should go back up to the eight hundred thousand to as, as our contingency. You know, so at least we're, you know, it's not gonna bite, it's not gonna come back and bite us. That's, that's what I like. Because we used the eight hundred thousand, so we should at least have that back. That's what I like.
So, and, and, so we, on, on the budget funds right now, as presented, uh, to us, is, you know, there is for the board of education, there...
Can I say, oh, stop? Is there any, as you went through the, the lease, the lease payments that were, were committed to, is there anything gonna drop off, any of them?
Well, we don't have engine three anymore, correct? That's paid?
That's paid.
So we have tower, or truck one, and an ambulance, correct? On your side, on the fire department's side?
Correct.
And public works?
Public works has, uh, two dump trucks, and one's in payment, two of three this year, and one will be the last payment, truck thirty-seven, that will be payment three this year. That'll drop off in twenty-four, twenty-five. So you have one more year to fund, then it'll drop off.
So, so how much is...
Ninety-nine thousand, ninety-nine, nine fifty-eight.
For both, for each lease?
Yeah, that's the one that's dropping off.
Is a hundred thousand?
Yep, and the other one is a hundred and, a hundred and four, eight thirds, say a hundred and five. That's gonna stay on for a year.
And then we have two fifty for truck one, and how much for the ambulance?
Tower, what is it, two twenty-nines, I say two thirty, and then the ambulance is eighty thousand, and that goes, the ambulance goes a couple more years, it's only payment two. the ambulance goes a couple more years, it's only payment two in the area you're budgeting now. And the tower, this is payment two out of five for the tower, so that, that doesn't fall off. Tower falls off, 27, 28 is the last one for the tower.
So we have almost 700,000.
Yeah, the ambulance drops off in '26, '27, and the tower drops off in '27, '28.
Okay, thanks, Ian.
If you, I mean, if you look at our five-year plan, that tells the story. You know, we try to keep the balance going forward and we try to keep it equal, but when you flip the page, one drops off, one goes on.
Right.
So it goes through five years.
Right. It's the cycle.
It's a cycle. When you jump the cycles, I wouldn't jump here and there, but.
You can't, we can't consistently.
We had to turn it down today.
And that's how we got into problems, because there were a few years where we didn't fund anything on there.
And we're in 88s, so they're not, they're not on the world.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's back to life, just, we try to spread it out over years, so it
It's all about consistency. That's like the, on your line phrase, once you get a number, I think in Fran's cases, it looks like 350 is his number. So religiously, you're going to bake 350 into his budget every year for capital, and that's going to be his truck reserve, things like that. So I think that, your point is valid, prior years, we're kind of, oh, it's a tough year, we're not going to fund it, blah, 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 blah. So you got to get a number in mind. On the fire side, it looks like it might be close to the 400,000. That's, that's your target, that you're going to budget every year, no matter what, 400,000 to fire, 350 to Fran, and that's just a fact of life that I said. You're going to replace trucks periodically, whether it's a fire apparatus or a public works vehicle. Otherwise, you get caught with a situation where you're buying two or three at once and then you're strapped and it's, it's ridiculous. So it's a bit back to a philosophy we put in place a long time ago, trying to build these reserves up, get to a consistent number where you're not, maybe not only paying your current obligation, but putting maybe 25 or 50 into the K so it builds up. So if you have something catastrophic, like a truck go down today and needs major repairs, he's got a little bit of cushion in his, in his reserve to cover those kinds of things. So nothing that we haven't thought about for a hundred years ago.
I mean, you can see it in the five-year plan, you look back and you can see it, it's awesome all around. I mean, the numbers can't, the numbers can't be saying 350, which I agree with, but if you look at inflation, they all come up.
Right.
You know, trucks aren't cheap anymore.
Just trying to turn over every stone in the pile.
Does anyone else have any questions at all? Okay. So like I said, Board of Education, there was nothing new to report from them and debt service is really nothing we can do on debt service for this year. I mean, it is what it is and so if no one has any other questions or comments in regards to the budget, we will finalize the budget on next Tuesday night, on the 16th, as part of our regular town council meeting. So we need to finalize here. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose?
Bruce is second.
Okay. Thank you for coming out tonight and we'll finalize this next week.
What's that? Got to take goo to bed.